Welcome to Studio Stillwater. My name's Michelle Charles.
And I'm Chris Peters.
And I am Steve Hallgren.
There you go. And we're talking to Steve Hallgren, candidate for school board today.
Yes.
Thank you for being here, Steve.
I'm really pleased for this opportunity. I think the fact that we have three candidates for Ward Five is really important because it means we're going to have a campaign. And it'll shine some light on the school district, which is always good. People will know what the district is all about and learn something from the election. So it's positive, very positive to have an election right now.
So one of our goals is to help people get to know who you are as a person a little bit better. So let's start with just the basics. How did you get to Stillwater?
Well, I'm originally from Minnesota and my family is all there. But so I did my school there, both primary, secondary school, and I went to the university, the University of Minnesota. And I always knew that I wanted to be in research and teaching. So I went on to get graduate degrees at Oregon State and the University of California at Berkeley. In forestry, forest ecology, forest science, to do research in forests, because I love being in the forest.
There's not a whole lot of forests in Oklahoma.
Well, you'd be surprised. Actually, it's about 30% have it forested. And you know, if forests, we have a significant, really, when you get down to Southeast, and even in the Panhandle, we have four species of pines. I don't think many people know that.
Wow.
There's shortleaf and loblawli in the south, and pinion and ponderosa in the Panhandle.
Okay.
And it's huge diversity of vegetation across the state. So it's in some ways, it's, it's not like, you know, Arkansas with its Waldoal pine, or someplace like Oregon and Washington, but it's, it's got a lot of forest.
So Steve, how much of the cross timbers is left?
Um.
Is there much?
Well, the cross timbers area is a mosaic of grassland and forest.
Right.
And a lot of the grassland is gone because it was manipulated for pasture and for agriculture. They didn't disturb the forest as much. So the forest part of that mosaic, there's still quite a bit of it that is intact. That doesn't mean that it's primary untouched, but it's still forest. What, how much of it? Well, man, that'd be tough to say, but there's a significant amount of it left.
Okay.
And it was something that I did research on in the, when I was still at the university.
Okay.
It's, it's the largest amount of the cross timbers is in Oklahoma. It also reaches into Kansas and down into Texas.
Sure.
And we have a lot of cross timbers.
I've been fascinated by the concept of it. It's the idea, it's this, it's this unique ecosystem, as I understand it, where the prairie meets the woods.
Right.
And it ran, and Stillwater is kind of on the edge of it, is that right?
It's an ecotone. Well, we're, yeah, we're in the middle, more in the middle of it.
Okay.
Yeah, if you, if you take the original cross timbers.
Okay, very good.
But we came to Oklahoma in 1986.
Right.
I already had, I was married and had two kids, and we moved here in 86. And I was at the university through my entire career up until retiring in 2019. I'm sorry, 2017. I retired from the university in June of 2017. So.
So you raised your family here?
The whole family was raised here. The three kids went through school. We moved here when the oldest was about six years old and the youngest, a little bit younger than that, about four and two. And, but they went through the rest of their school here in Stillwater. And then our son was born here and he did his entire school work here.
Are any of your kids still here?
No, they're scattered around. As a parent, I'm sure you get to appreciate, we have two grandchildren now, and we have to travel a lot to visit them. One's in Portland, Oregon, Grand Rapids, Michigan, and Nashville, Tennessee.
Okay.
That is quite a spread.
They moved out, yeah, to visit all of them. Last summer, we visited all of them all by driving because flying was not thought to be a really good way to go. And we put like 10,000 miles in the car to visit them all.
Oh, wow.
In about six weeks.
That's dedication.
Lot of, lot of driving. Well, thank you for that. Yes. It was a lot of driving. I'd have to really say that. But we've loved Stillwater since we've been here. It's a great place to raise kids. The school system was excellent, very high quality. So we were really glad to do it. It was a very safe place. I think other people from Stillwater would recognize it when we, when our kids were older, that they could come home from school and take care of themselves. We didn't even lock the doors in the house.
Oh, yes.
The kids would just come in and we say, I can't remember what grades they would be in. It's hard to remember that. But at a certain age, we thought they could, and they would come home, get a snack and then leave and the doors were unlocked. So you can imagine the kind of safe environment that is when you're, when you're children, when they're in their early teens. And just leave a note where you've gone off and who you're playing with and we'll see you at dinnertime when, when we weren't there.
So how was that compared to your, was that very similar to your childhood? How, what was it like?
I grew up in Minnesota and that was also a similar neighborhood, very safe. Roseville, Minnesota would, would be very similar to that. Yeah. So it, it's one that I appreciate. I think, I've lived in other places in big cities, which were not nearly as, oh, let's say, nice.
Right.
Searching for the word for, for raising kids.
Right.
A lot more difficult, safety was not, is, is, is common.
Okay.
But we're, so we've been in Stillwater since 86. And I took a couple of sabbaticals and also we left for two years in the Peace Corps, 2017 to 19.
I wanted to ask you about that because I find that I am obsessed with the Peace Corps.
Oh, okay.
And I, when I was a little kid, I idolized Miss Lily and Carter.
Oh, yes.
And I always thought when I, one of these days I'm going to be this, this awesome old lady and I'm going to go join the Peace Corps.
Yeah.
That's what I always told myself.
You can always do it.
So what made you decide to do it?
First time I did it, both my wife and I did it in 2017 and we both had done it before.
Oh, when did you do it before?
Both of us right out of college at the age of 22 went into Peace Corps. Now Jerry's a little bit older, so she did hers in 66 to 68 in Tunisia.
Okay.
And I was in 72 to 74 in Morocco. So I knew what we were in for. And I thought, at the end of the career at the university, that it would be an exciting adventure, but it'd also be a way to provide some service and also to represent my commitment to a more global view, global perspective of things. I'm very strongly supportive that this is one world that we all live in and we all have to get along and we have to know about each other. And also Peace Corps allows you to provide some technical assistance. We were both teachers and they needed teachers. They need teachers very badly.
Right.
And they learned a little bit about Americans by us going there and we learned about them.
And how long were you there?
Two years. In fact, a little over two years.
What country were you in?
Tanzania, East Africa.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't know much. All you can read and it's another evidence, another example of how traveling to a place that you've read a lot about completely changes. You can't learn it in the book. And when you go there, your concepts are just throw them all out and start all over again. It's so different than what I expected it to be. And I learned so much by going there and I just hope that the Tanzanians learned about us. It's a difficult assignment because everything is so peculiar to you. It's different from what you're used to living in. And so you have to adjust to that.
Right.
And you can't let that adjustment overwhelm you or else you won't be able to get anything else done. And so you adjust to living there and then the people that you're living with in a village.
Okay, I was wondering if you were in a bigger city or a village.
You're in a village. You walk everywhere. Everywhere you go, you're, everybody sees you every day, the whole two years. You're walking to the markets, you're walking to the school, you're walking everywhere. So you're just part of the community. So they learn a lot about you, you learn about them, and then you're also providing, and that, providing technical assistance. And to me, that is a very powerful tool. There have been 250,000 volunteers since it started in 1961. And I'm glad to be part of it. Now Jerry did it twice, three times, actually. She was in Burkina Faso for two years.
Oh, wow.
13 to, 2013 to 2015.
Okay.
And that was a very poor country and Tanzania was equally poor, almost. Burkina Faso may be a little more, a little poorer. But you can learn and about these countries and how the people are there. And how they, what makes them happy, what makes them sad, how they're, you know, just how they live their lives. And let's say, America, the United States is involved in every country in the world, one way or another.
And we often don't realize that.
If we don't understand those countries, how can we make good decisions? I mean, to remind everyone, this is a democracy where we vote.
Yeah.
And we vote on our representatives and they're making decisions about policy, about how we get involved in these countries. Sometimes we're involved in them by providing aid or extracting resources or in commercial interactions. Well, you can't deal with someone in a, in an effective way unless you understand them.
Right.
So to my mind, Peace Corps is part of that, just learning more about these countries and helping other persons. When we come home, the third goal of Peace Corps is when you come home is to let Americans know about the place where you have just been and what it's like. And.
I'm sure there are a lot of differences, but, but what do you feel like you, you really learned?
Well.
And what surprised you, I guess?
Well, one of the things you learn is that a huge amount of the things that we hold so dear and to us and the way we interact with each other are the same everywhere. They're the same for them. You can learn, well, I mean, they're interested in their families, they're interested in their children. They are interested in the welfare of their children and them getting a good education and a good job. They go about it in the same ways that, that we do. They just, so what one can learn is how do they try to do all of these things that we're trying to do, but when they have like 100th of the accumulated wealth and those resources that we have. The, to give you an example, I mean, you can get GDP and per capita and that, but it might also be interesting to know that there, you could hire someone to work for you for a full day for maybe three bucks to do anything you asked him to do.
Wow.
Call rocks, dig the garden, whatever, three bucks.
Hmm, three dollars. We could do that for, we could hire a podcast editor. We could afford that.
We could afford a podcast editor.
Is that what you're getting paid?
That's more than what I'm getting paid.
I gave him a bottle of water.
Yeah, we're gonna have a pizza party later.
Yeah, I'm ordering pizza later on tonight.
Oh, really? Well, I'll hang around for that.
There you go. There you go. Now, I've, I've had friends who've done Peace Corps and one of the things they've commented on was, and that I've noticed, when they came back, they are just kind of shocked at how their perspective has changed on just the, the bounty of everything that seems to be available to us. I think that, you know, often we don't realize it. I, I don't know. Did, did that have any kind of impact? I mean, you'd done it before, but.
Both times.
What's your perspective?
Well, both times you come back from that and you're actually deep down, a little bit embarrassed by the level of affluence. I mean, when you've lived for two years and you, and the markets you go to has only got one kind of toothpaste, so you know, you haven't any choice.
Right.
And many of the things that you're used to, they just don't have. So you have to make changes and then you come back and now you walk into a big store and you've, you've got like, in the aisle, there's 50 feet of toothpaste. You gotta pick one, one you want, want. It's a little bit overwhelming, but also you start wanting, why?
Right.
Why?
Right.
Something that struck me more this time than when we were in Morocco is that most of the things that we ate and bought in the market were unprocessed.
Okay.
So the food was, you just get used to eating food that's not processed. And they said, okay, what do we eat that's processed? Well, buying pre-made bread, chips, mixes, none of that.
Right.
If you want to make a breakfast cereal, you go buy the grains and you take it to the guy down the street who grinds it for you.
Oh, wow.
Right. So that's, that's it, you know, you, so that's, the greatest amount of processing was take, and the wheat and the grain probably came from the field, just down the road a little bit. The only processing was it was harvested and threshed and then it was dried and ground. And you're right there. So there's, the stuff you're doing are so close to the production angle that, and it really simplifies things. And when you get used to it, after a while, you kind of like it.
Right.
And then you come back and that's not available anymore. It's really not available here to get that level of, of.
Convenience has kind of replaced connection to.
Well, we have got tremendous amount of convenience too.
Right.
You can also get a little bit impatient with persons who think it is so important to have this one little item that, you know, that it's only available anywhere except in the US. And you go, well, okay, the rest of the world doesn't think that's so important. So.
Right.
But also, it's just living on a simpler, more, I guess, basic, basic level. And then you come back and adjust to something that's a lot more complex, a lot more affluent. It doesn't take long. You come back into the routine, especially, you know, even for a 20-year-old to come back after two years. But you're always this lingering thought in your mind that helps you try and figure out what's really important.
Okay.
Things that you do. And so you, you look at things a bit differently. You definitely do. You can't look at things the same way again anymore.
So, I mean, you've had some, some really interesting experiences, I, I think. And I mean, those, those have to have formed your worldview, you know, what you value and everything. Talk to us about what's important to you.
Oh, boy. Well, I think human interactions. That's one thing that you learned and I'm trying to apply it when we come back. One thing that you do in Tanzania is that there's always a greeting before you do anything. And you get used to that because it just makes things move more smoothly. People, you, you, you see the, the smile or the better attention you get when you go to the market. When you act like in a polite way and in a caring way, like you might be really interested in the family of the person who's selling you your, your fruit and vegetables.
Yeah.
And you kind of develop a, an attachment to the person through being a good person yourself.
Right.
And there's a lot of that and it's very important. You're, there's, you're much closer. The, the personal interactions and the family relationships are very strong. And then you come back and we find out that, you know, I can walk into a store and I don't have to say hi or anything. I just say, I want one of those, I want one of those. Or I'm here to, you know, to get a oil filter for my car and no exchange about anything other than just the oil filter I want in my car. It's very effective, very efficient to do that.
Right.
But you are missing that a bit. So I probably shouldn't put it in that light is that I'm trying to be critical of the way we operate in the United States.
Right.
The idea that I have developed a sense of some of the things that are, are really important. And I think personal interactions are very, very high, that you show respect for the person, you develop a closeness to them, find out more about them and throughout your life, just acting that way. So. And I think if you look around at the, perhaps in, in the, around the community, the people that are the most successful, I think are actually, we don't really teach this in school and you don't learn it when you're learning techniques, are actually the persons that are really people, people. They love working with other people and they understand them and they know what they want and they know how to interact with them in a very positive way. And I think, you know, if we had a little bit more of that sentiment today, given the pandemic, we might be a little bit better off than we are. There's no sense that this pandemic should be tearing us apart, away from each other. It should be actually, I think the community should be rising and becoming more cooperative with it.
Right.
And understanding, you can't be, it'd be nice if there's a little bit more patience amongst persons because it's going to change a lot of things. It's going to change just, I don't know, can you name a, a person in the community that isn't affected in somewhere or another? Some are more affected than others.
Sure. But everyone's been impacted in some way.
Sometimes it's caused them to have to make difficult decisions. It's caused them to have to do things they don't want to do. It's caused them to be maybe less productive. But let's have a little patience.
Right.
And not be so critical. It's gonna, it's gonna pass. It's gonna be over. It's not the end of the world.
Yeah, we need to give each other grace and space.
Yeah.
Exactly.
How about that?
Exactly.
And everything, and not be so demanding that everything just stay the same. The pandemic is going to be over and we're going to get to go back to something that's a little more normal, a little bit more pleasant. But I guess that, you asked, what do I think is important? I guess I would, I mean, for a functioning society that is healthy, I think that's something I'm very interested in, that the community provide that kind of environment. The ills of the community will, will show its shortcomings. And I think trying to develop ways to, to just make a healthier, healthier community.
So how does that lead to you wanting to serve on the school board?
Well, it's only one small part. You know, the, the school board's five persons that work with the, with the district. And that's just a small part of all the stuff that goes on in the community. But it does affect a lot of people. There are 6,000 students. Every student has parents and siblings. So you're talking about several tens of thousands, well, several tens of thousands. Many, many, a huge part of the population is affected by the school system. And I have a lot of background in education and being from the university, teaching high school for a couple of years. My sister was a elementary school principal. And so I've heard a lot about it from her, what it's like. And her interactions with the school board in Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, that was interesting to hear what, what went on out there. So I've, I've had the direct experience and I've heard a lot. My whole, my father was a professor at the University of Minnesota. So I have background in education. So I think that I can bring something.
Right.
Make a contribution.
Right.
And I kind of also have this sentiment of trying to work together to make things better.
Right.
Rather than just pushing one goal that, you know, what's the overall outcome? The overall outcome is an improvement in the condition of the community with, through education, educating the population. That should lift everyone, should lift the whole community. You know, rising anyone is gonna, and maybe a little bit, but eventually everyone has benefited from that. And so I have that commitment to it. And I guess that's one thing that would push me towards providing the service. Now, the other things that go along with it, I have the time, I have my, my health, the financial situation that I can do it, the background from being in education for a long time. I guess I was also a scientist at the university. So I think I have some analytical skills.
Okay.
Being in this kind of a role, you're supposed to represent the community, not in any one view, any one idea, any one goal or peculiar position. You're supposed to represent everyone. And sometimes it helps to be a little bit dispassionate or objective, to be able to stand back and say, okay, this is what people are telling me they want. These are the kind of things they're interested in. But you have to be a little objective. And I say dispassionate, in other words, if you've got this one little, well, we gotta do it this way because.
Right.
You know, that's what I think. It's, I don't think that's a good way to serve the community.
Well, and with the school board, I mean, you, you all are really having to balance a lot of competing interests, a lot of competing perspectives.
Oh, mine.
So that's gotta be a challenge.
Well, it definitely is. We get, I think every one of the school board would say right away, the tens and hundreds of emails we get with all these different views.
How do you balance that, like personally and allow all that information and stuff that you're getting from various parents and teachers and whatnot to still kind of keep yourself sane? Cause I think there's some of us that are like, oh, man, we would, we would just close the computer and be like, okay, I can't, I can't, I can't deal with that.
That's a good question because there's so much of it.
Yeah.
It is so much, it's relentless.
And some of it's personal too.
It does. I'd have to say that when they get too insulting, too personal and just outright insulting, it's, those emails don't get read very carefully.
Right.
Those are kind of like, okay, someone's.
Just like if, if you came off the street and somebody was like, oh, hey, that's a, that's Steve over there and he didn't vote on this. And they, you know, call you a name, you're probably not going to want to continue engaging.
Just ask yourself, if someone started a conversation with you as, with an insult.
Yeah.
Right.
How much, are you gonna listen to the rest of it?
Sure, but your walls go up.
Yeah. And it's not, that's not helpful at all. I'm, I'm a big proponent of information flow and even the bad and the good, you gotta get it all out there and you gotta see it and read it. How to digest it, how to learn from it, what does it all mean? I don't know. I was a proponent of doing the listening sessions. And, you know, some of the people on the board, well, we should do them once a month. I think we should do them every week.
Right.
And let persons speak until they're tired of speaking. And it, it, it does several things. One is it, it shows the community that we care and we're interested in what they have to say. It gives them a chance to say it in front of other parents because the emails are in front of the board and whoever else they send it to, and that's it. No one else sees it.
Right.
But when you're having to speak, and I think it'd be nice if these listening sessions had 200 observers. There are 18 people can speak, but I'd like it to be wide open, as many as possible, so that everyone can see and hear.
Right.
And feel heard.
Exactly. And we can't do it in person. So what's wrong with a Zoom? And if we had them every week, and also I think they're starting now, it'd be nice if we had them targeted, for example, a subject. Tonight, we're going to talk about sports. Tonight, we're going to talk about the orchestra.
Yeah.
And then if we also had guests come, you know that the state epidemiologist is from OSU. I'm sure he would be glad to participate in one of these things and people could ask him questions, you know, well, we've got this protocol. What do you think of the protocol? What about this part of the protocol? What about that part of the protocol? Is this, and so the listening sessions are fantastic. So I like the input. How to digest it is another thing. And I'd have to say, I'm, I have a, a pretty strong bias, having been part of large organizations like OSU. My whole career, Peace Corps is a big organization too, is that you delegate responsibility to do things. There are committees, there are, and when you give a committee a responsibility, then you make sure the committee is made up of the type of people that should be there to make the decision. And then you watch what they're doing and how they do it, make sure they're doing it correctly. And, but then you have to accept what they tell you. Now, we have a protocol committee with many participants from everybody, from parents to teachers, administrators all over, and they spend a tremendous amount of work trying to come up with a protocol that's suitable. So now, and if you find an error with it or something that you don't think they've done right, it, it's a responsibility to say so and a school board member should do that. But you can't just go against them because you don't like what they find.
Yeah.
Because there are 15 of them, or 20, I can't remember exactly how many there are, making this decision. You have to put some faith in that. I mean, when I was at the university, we had committees all the time. The reason you have committees is that they can work as an effective group and analyze data, meet frequently, look at all the different other aspects of it, give different opinions, and then they work together to reach a solution. But it has to be a relatively small, you know, 20 is actually pretty big, but, and then they reach a decision and that's how everything is done. Well, not everything, but that's how a lot, a lot of, a lot of policy decisions are made.
Sure.
And I'm a supporter of that.
Okay, so not second guessing those people that you task with looking into those.
I, there are, there are way, if, I don't think you should be second guessing them, but on the other hand, if you have some concern, you think it wasn't done correctly, you should say so.
Okay.
But you can't just go in and tell them, well, I don't agree, you know, do it over again, or we're not going to accept what you decided, we're just going to do it this way.
So, so Steve, I mean, over this last, well, I mean, really starting with the beginning of the pandemic, there's really been a spotlight on the school board. In a way, there is not normally, there are not normally protests outside the Board of Education building.
And I never thought to go watch a, a broadcast or a Zoom of the school board meeting, even though I've got kids, you know, in elementary school.
Oh, really? Okay, yeah.
Until, until now. And it was like, oh, this is, this is much must-watch TV.
Exactly. So, so having said all that, I mean, things have not always been so pleasant in terms of the interaction between the parents. I mean, some parents are very grateful. They're very supportive, you know, and some, there's a fair amount of hostility too. Why are you still willing to do this? Why are you still willing to serve?
Well, one thing about longevity is after you've seen a lot of things, you have, you have mechanisms for smoothing it out. Actually, as you go through life, you're going to find a lot of people you don't just, you don't agree with. And I mean, even with, how about on the playground where you're a little kid and you want to play with that truck and that kid wants it?
Right.
You know, that's just, to me, I'm not trying to diminish it. I'm not trying to be silly about it, but you have to learn mechanisms for seeing those things and reacting to them in a proper way. And so it, I, I would be untruthful if I didn't say, I'd have to say it's stressful.
Right.
It causes some anxiety and some stress, but it is not overwhelming for the important task that needs to be accomplished. So I, I'm, I'm willing to stick it out. I'm willing to, I'm, I'm glad to. Um, so I, I'm, I'm willing to stick it out. I'm willing to, I'm, I'm glad to still be doing it. Um, I don't think the pandemic is gonna last forever, but, um, so this will pass. In fact, I think some of the things are really exciting to think about. And that would be another reason to stay in. One thing that I like, and I tend to like that in any organization, they should be looking towards improvement.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I've always thought, um, I'm an optimist that the human condition is improving through time. You know, it goes maybe up and down a little bit, but it's supposed to be improving. And that the school system can improve. I think if anyone looked back at the school system 30 years ago, they'd say it's better today than it was. And so I'd like to be part of that. Um, I think the pandemic has shown light on some things that we weren't doing very well before. Or, and maybe in another way, that we've learned something for the pandemic about how we were doing things that we could make improvements.
Okay.
And so we should come out of this with a much better school system. Even when the pandemic is gone, it's not gonna go back to the way it was. And, um, I think some of these, one of the most obvious and glaring ones is the use of, uh, internet, um, uh, technology.
Right.
I can't see going back to before, the way it was used. I'm not saying we weren't doing a good job before, but now it's just been thrust, we've been forced. So let's make use of it.
Yeah, we've, I've got two young kids and we're doing, you know, we did virtual last semester. And then we switched to, uh, to in-person with the hope of maybe, you know, AB in, in the future. And it's been interesting to see the kids and more specifically, the teachers have to pick up these new tools.
Mm-hmm.
And not necessarily having really, you know, much training on them, but figuring it out as they go.
Right.
And they're, you know, getting better and better. And it seems like we can't put those tools back down after this.
And I, and technology, you know, the, uh, edutiny, the, um, virtual is not for everyone.
Yeah.
But having taught 30 years, when these technologies came around, I saw some students who in the past had just sat in the back and never asked any questions, never participated, now were part of the class through the technology.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we ought to recognize that and give some persons, some students, some families, this opportunity in a way that if it benefits them. I know now they're being forced to do it sometimes, but in the future as an option, it could be, it could add some dimension to our education system. That I think could be very positive, very powerful.
Well, one of the things too, I mean, uh, brick and, uh, school districts have been, you know, struggling with competition from online charter schools, right? You know, worrying about losing students, the students who either aren't doing well in that traditional classroom setting, either because of, you know, social issues, whatever issues. There are a variety of reasons that people might need a different sort of option. Um, now I've noticed at the last board meeting, you know, there's discussion about Stillwater Public Schools having a virtual option moving forward, where you don't, those kids don't have to leave the school district. They have that option right here within Stillwater Public Schools. That's kind of an exciting innovation. Do you feel like it is?
Oh, I definitely do. In fact, I, actually, I think even before the pandemic though, there was the option for virtual.
Right.
But it wasn't used very much.
And not for elementary, right?
Well, no, it was, you're right. It was only at secondary level.
Right.
And now it's expanded much broader than that. But you're, so you're right. It's an expanded level that didn't exist before.
Right.
And I think now, um, those persons who see it and see, see, see some benefits from it, that we shouldn't remove that when the pandemic is over. We should continue to use it. I'm, I think some teachers thrive with more technology and actually the virtual angle. Some have not liked it so much. Well, you know what? Now that, when the pandemic is over, people can, if we allow it, they can choose the path that is best technology for them. And what they want to do and of course, what the school district needs. So that would be one reason that I am, would, I'd like to participate in the recovery, the renewal that's going to happen after this leaves. I, I think a lot of other things that we found out about. Um, and, um, you know, how to deliver the education, how to interact with parents.
Right.
And, um, you know, some of the, the issues that have crept in because now the kids are at home and how do the parents handle the children at home? They're having to get an education. Um, I don't think our community was really that well prepared. Um, and I guess why would they? Pandemics don't come around very often. But for the upheaval that was caused by the, um, you know, the, the distance learning. And are, are there some services that the community could get involved in? Or at least ways of, of helping persons that are, um, put out, that are, uh, uh, less successful at, at meeting those needs? And we can look at how, when we come back out of this pandemic, better serving those, those persons. So I, the, the school system is supposed to be serving the entire community. And, um, I think we have learned something from this pandemic about where the problems were in doing that.
Okay.
And so we try to, try to do a better job there.
So when the day is done, how does Steve wind down?
Well, for relaxing, um, uh, going out for a walk, working in the yard, being outdoors. So nothing beats that. Um, there's another thing that you might be alluding to is what do you do in the evening just to relax? And, you know, they do say, and I, and I, I have the time to do it now. Didn't perhaps when I was, you know, working on the treadmill at the University of Publisher Parish. But, um, you're supposed to prepare for going to sleep and part of that is calming down. One thing is not to look at the computer screen. Apparently the colors coming off the computer screen have an effect on your brain and the chemicals.
The blue lights.
The blue light. So that keeps you awake. So quit looking at the screen. So what I like to do is maybe have, you know, Jerry says a great thing is a, uh, you know, hot milk with a little honey in it. Um, a warm drink. And then read a book. I'm reading the book on Hamilton right now. And boy, that's a, the set, the great chapters, well, you won't go to sleep with them. But then it is so detailed and so, it's like 800 pages or something. It's got so, sometimes it, you know, you can just kind of allow yourself gradually to a more relaxed state by reading through these volumes of information about Hamilton. And it's, it's so reading.
Okay.
Reading, relaxing, sitting around and not doing anything that contributes to your, you know, your, whatever you gotta get done.
Not laying in bed, catching Pokemon on my phone?
So just relaxing. It's good. And it, you, actually, a lot of people don't realize that you should put an effort into that because the, how, the quality of your sleep that night depends on your preparing and having a routine to get to bed in a, in a productive fashion. So. I, I guess that's what you might've been thinking about, but.
Yeah, no, that's very good advice.
There you go. That's great advice. I need that advice, actually.
Guilty.
All right. Well, thank you so much for coming in and sitting down with us, Steve. It was really good getting to know you a little bit better.
Well, it's a pleasure to do it and I like to stay, uh, accessible. So, I mean, anyone could call me or send an email or, I mean, there's lots of ways to do that. So as a board member, one should be getting input. I think some people hold back. Well, don't hold back.
Okay.
Whatever you have to say.
Okay. And how do people find your contact information?
Well, one would be through the internet on the, um, OS, on the Stillwater School.
Okay.
So we're listed as board members and there's, you could send an email that way. That's probably the best way to do it.
Okay.
I mean, I, I also have a, uh, Facebook page, Steve Hallgren for Stillwater Board of Education, Ward Five. So if you're on Facebook, look that up.
Yep.
Facebook, Google has an incredible algorithm, whatever you want to call it, for finding things. So you don't have to put much in and you can get there.
Yep. Try to type in the name.
It'll find, it'll find it for you.
Yep.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks again to Steve Hallgren for joining us. Up next, we've got an interview with Jeanette Burkhart, Stillwater Board of Education candidate for Ward Five. Before we part, I'd like to ask a favor. If you like the show, tell your friends about it. Our vision at Studio Stillwater is to elevate local voices and tell local stories. This is where you come in. Maybe you know a friend who has an amazing story to share. Or maybe that story is yours. We want to hear it. You can get in touch with us via email, studiosstillwaterok@gmail.com. Or for the socialites, slide into our DMs on Facebook, Twitter, or Instagram. You can also send us a voice message by going to anchor.fm/studiosstillwater. Just hit the add message button to record right from your phone or computer. We would love to feature your voice in a future episode, even if it's just saying how awesome we are. Finally, check out the show notes. There you will find links to everything we discussed on the show. Thanks again for joining us. Until next time.